I will now call the February 19, 2013 Blue Springs City Council Meeting in order. If you would stand, we will observe a moment of silence and then I will lead you in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. I want to welcome you to tonight's Blue Springs City Council meeting, as well as those that might be watching on Cable TV 7. The next item is the consent agenda. Unless there are items to be pulled, I would accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Gobel.
Aye.
Councilman Lacy.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Berman.
Aye.
Carried unanimously with Councilman Fowler absent.
Next, we have a presentation of the audit report. We're going to ask Kevin Smith to come up, and also Kristen Hughes, from McClady Accounting Firm, I suppose.
Good evening. Mayor Ross, members of City Council, City management, thanks for having us here this evening. We're here, we've got a brief presentation to go through the results of the September 30, 2012 audit that is required for the city to have each year. There's a few different documents we're going to refer to throughout the presentation. One is the large comprehensive annual financial report. Another is a smaller document that's titled Compliance Report, it's a smaller bound with the green cover. And then there's one other item that's required communication, that has some standard communications that we're also going to discuss. The first few slides, Kristen's going to talk through the required communication, and then also talk about the results of the compliance audit. And then there's a few slides that just highlight some of the financial results from the city's, in the city's financial statements.
Good evening. Excuse me. As Kevin mentioned, the unbound document is what's referred to as the required communications to the council. In summary, this slide here will summarize what you'll find in that document. The first couple pages, we'll go through what is referred to as the required communications. So the first item that we'd like to emphasize, in the comprehensive annual financial report, the auditor responsibilities, there was an unqualified or what's referred to as a clean audit opinion. The financial statements presented in accordance with GAAP. This will also go through, summarize if there was any, as you'll see there are any disagreements with management, any significant issues encountered during the audit, of which there were none. You'll also see summarized, there's a page of what's referred to as significant accounting estimates, and here we go through areas in the financials that involve a component of estimates or management's subjectivity. So we summarize those there, and as part of our audit procedures, we do go through and make sure that the procedures used by management are reasonable in going through those estimations. You'll also see a summary of what's referred to as uncorrected immaterial misstatements, and those are just a couple items noted during the audit. There are adjustments that are not reflected in the financials because they're determined to be immaterial by both management and ourselves, but we do summarize those in the document for your review. You'll also see future accounting pronouncements. If there's any significant accounting pronouncements coming up that are expected to impact the city's financial statements in future years, those are summarized in the footnotes to the financials, so you'll see those summarized in footnote 12 of the CAFER. And also included in the document is required written communications between management and ourselves, so primarily in there you'll see the arrangement letter that was entered into with the contract, and then what's referred to as the management representation letter, management representing to us that basically the information provided to us during the audit was, to the best of their knowledge, accurate. The smaller bound report, as Kevin mentioned, is referred to as the compliance report. This will summarize, first of all, what was referred to as our gas opinion, if there was any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses noted during the financial statement audit, those would be summarized in here, if there were none during the audit. There's also an opinion that will summarize if there was any significant deficiencies, material weaknesses, or compliance findings over the grant testing that was done, and there were none this year. And then for your information for the, also in the compliance report, it'll summarize the federal grant expenditures that the city incurred, grants that were basically received by the city and spent. And so for the major program, we had one major program that was tested this year, it was the Sewers State Revolving Fund, and in testing that grant, we tested approximately 73 percent of the city's total federal expenditures, and no compliance findings were noted, meaning that in the procedures we went through with that grant, the city was spending grant money in accordance with what was noted in the grant agreement for the current fiscal year.
I've got a few slides here that just highlight some of the financial results from the city's audit, and the first few slides are just going to focus on the city's general fund. I do want to point out a few things before I go through the slide in the CAFER. If I, here we go. Okay. The, in the first section of the CAFER, you'll see there's an introductory section that shows, there's a certificate of achievement that is awarded from the Government's Finance Officers Association, the GFOA. You'll see last year, the city did receive that certificate. It's a, it's a award that is given by the GFOA for reporting excellence. There's certain standards that have to be met when you put together that report in order to receive that certificate. So the city did receive that certificate from last year. They'll be submitting this year's CAFER and would expect to receive that certificate again going forward. The, as Kristen mentioned, the opinion that is included in the financial statements is an unqualified or a clean opinion. All of the financial statements included here is the responsibility of management. Management puts together these numbers, we audit the numbers, we issue our opinion. There's a lot of different schedules that you see within this document. For a good summary of the financial activity, in pages three through 14 is the management's discussion and analysis. And so that's going to give you several graphs and comparative information, comparing 2011 results to 2012 results. There's also a lot of narrative in there that explains any significant fluctuations. And also in the very back of the CAFER, starting on page 84, that's the statistical section, and so that'll give a 10-year history of a lot of the financial results of the city. So those are two good spots to go to if you do want that historical perspective. This first slide here, then, as I mentioned, is just the revenue by type for the city's general fund. So you'll see by far that the largest source of revenue is tax revenue. Total revenue for the general fund this year was 26.3 million compared to 27.7 million in fiscal year 2011, so there was, there was a decrease overall in revenue. Most of the revenue categories that you see there remained relatively consistent compared to 2011, and haven't fluctuated much, except for the, there was about a $1.4 million decrease in tax revenue in the general fund. The next slide then shows the expenditures by function for your general fund. Total expenditures were about 23.9 million for the, for the general fund in fiscal year 2012, very similar to the total expenditures incurred in 2011. So most of these categories remained relatively flat, slight increase in public safety expenditures, and then a decrease somewhat in general government expenditures. But overall, expenditures remained flat from 2011 for the general fund. This next slide then shows the fund balance by category for the general fund. GASB has lumped the fund balance into these five different categories that you see off to the right, and they're in order of spending constraints that are imposed by either third parties or by council resolutions. The first category is non-spendable, so this is fund balance that's not really in cash form, or that's not going to be converted to cash. This is mainly consists of prepaid, prepaid assets. The red section there is the restricted fund balance, so that's going to be something that's restricted by a third party, that you can't change the use of those funds. And then the largest portion there, 46 percent of the fund balance is, in the general fund, is committed fund balance, and most of that is represented by the budget stabilization and the emergency reserved. And then the remainder of the 2012 fund balance is unassigned, so about 40 percent of that fund balance can be spent at the city's discretion. And as I mentioned, that committed is what makes up the biggest category of the fund balance. But overall, there was a very slight decrease, about $30,000 decrease overall in the general fund fund balance from 2011. This next slide here just shows the legal debt margin for the city. It's, as of 9/30/2012, was 102 million. So the total assessed value of the city, 718 million dollars. So the assessed value, 20 percent of that assessed value is that debt limit, which is about 143 million. So you'll note that your bonded debt is about 42 million, which is about 102 million dollars less than the total debt capacity. And this last slide here shows the results of the city's enterprise funds, so this will include water, sewer, and golf. You'll see there's an increase overall in operating revenue and operating expense. We do show the net income for each of the funds, if you exclude depreciation, because that is a non-cash item, we're all positive. The cash flows from operations are all, is positive as well, so you're not funding these with, with, with general fund money. And that's the extent of the, the financial information we were going to have. As I mentioned, you've got good summaries included in your CAFER that show more detailed information. We'd be here all night if we went through that in more detail, but, but I do want to thank the city's finance department, Christine, and Karen, and Kristi, and everybody did a, did a great job preparing for us in, in making sure the financials were ready to be audited. We didn't have to come in and do the bookkeeping, but we came in and actually performed the audit, and it went very well. This was our first year performing the audit, and, you know, we appreciate the opportunity to serve the city, and I think things went very well, and then you'll see that the results overall are very good as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Were there any questions of the council? Seeing none, thank you so much for coming, presenting that to us, and also our heads off to Christine and her staff for the great work that they do. Matter of fact, I think that deserves a round of applause. Thank you so much. Why don't you have your staff stand? Everybody that works in Christine's department that's responsible for this. Oh, we're going to do it again. Thank you. Next, we have an introduction reading of Bill number 4248.
I'll introduce it, Your Honor.
All right.
First reading of Bill number 4248, an ordinance amending section 605.070 and 605.140 to change the penalties for occupational licenses and occupational taxes not paid for on time.
Would the bill be approved on the first, would the bill be approved on the first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Hold the same sign.
Second reading of Bill number 4248, an ordinance amending sections 605.070 and 605.140 to change the penalties for occupational licenses and occupational taxes not paid for on time.
Would the bill be approved on a second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilman Lacy.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Berman.
Aye.
Councilman Gobel.
Aye.
Carried unanimously with Councilman Fowler absent, giving an ordinance 4428.
Okay. Next, we have a presentation on a community center feasibility study. I'm going to turn it over to our Park and Recreation Director, Dennis Dovell, and he can introduce the rest of this feasibility study team.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Over the last three months, a team of consultants have been assisting the city in determining the feasibility of constructing a community center within, within the city of Blue Springs. The team was hired last October to conduct this, this study, and the consultants are comprised of SFS Architecture, BRS Architecture, Confluence, Ballard King, and Water Technology Incorporated. Also on a separate contract, the city contracted with ETC Laser Vision to conduct a statistically valid survey, which is incorporated into the findings. Also through the process, we've had a steering committee that's assisted in the development of the findings to date. The committee members include Councilman Dell Carter, Jennifer Splitter, Donna Best, Mark Bubalo, Dan Anderson, Linda Edison, Lori Moon, Deana McLean, Christine Kates, Todd Pelham, Eric Johnson, and Steve Willman. At this point, I'm going to turn this over to Kerry Newman to talk about the findings that they've done so far, and he'll introduce the rest of his team as they come up.
Thanks, Dennis. Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Tonight, we'd like to give you an update of where we are to date with the feasibility study, and give, also give you an opportunity to ask questions and discuss the feasibility study as well. So our agenda is to give you a little background on our study process to date. We have some information about the site selection process that we've gone through. We want to bring you up to speed on the programming, space programming, the overall budget, and concept design that we've developed so far, and then give you a little brief on what our next steps and for the next couple of months will be for this, for the feasibility study. So today, we held our third workshop with the Citizens Committee, and we reviewed preliminary plan layouts and building massing. We talked about architectural character and what the committee would like to see as far as materials and form and architectural character for the building. We also confirmed the, the program and the budget. So the next work period is going to further develop the architectural character of the building, to really start looking at the design of the facility. And so we, this would be a great time to get your input as we move forward into that next step. We'll start developing a 3D model of the, of the design, and then also update our program, our budget, and our operational pro forma, the costs and recovery for the, for the facility. And then we'll end up with our final workshop in April, mid, late April. So the study process, we start out and developed a mission statement, which has been, has been refined, and you can read it here, but provide a family-oriented, community gathering space in a fun, innovative environment that promotes lifelong health. We went through the, started really at the early part of the process doing our market analysis and community input process. So we looked at the primary and secondary service areas for the, for the building. We did a statistically valid community survey that was provided by ETC, and we've had a number of focus groups with local fitness providers. As I mentioned, currently Ballard King is drafting that final operations plan. We'll be able to update you on that in, in April. The service area that we're looking at, we started out by looking at a service area that was kind of a radius, kind of as a crow flies, but we've ended up looking at more of a drive time service area, where our primary service area is a 10-minute drive, and our secondary service, secondary service area is a 15-minute drive time. I want to just briefly run through some of the survey results, as I mentioned. We received 473 surveys. I think the goal was to have 350 surveys, so we've greatly exceeded the goal to have that statistically valid response. This is the, the number of responses from the different wards, districts, I'm sorry. So we have very even reporting from the, from the three districts. The three program features that the household would most use are indicated on this slide, and we've really used this as our guiding principle for programming the facility. So we've really hit all of these, all of these spaces and all these priorities. And then aquatics, same kind of question. We asked the three aquatic features that households would use most often. So family-oriented warm water pool was very high, warm water for therapeutic purposes, whirlpool, exercise and fitness. So those were things that we've, we've tried to really address those top features in our We asked how often households would use and visit the new indoor community center, and you'll see there that between a few times a month and several times a week, it's about 60, 67 percent of the, of the respondents. We also asked how the respondents would like to see the cost for operating the facility be handled, and you'll see that it's kind of a combination of fees, 100, 25 percent said through fees, 36 percent said through majority, through taxes, and some through fees. So really between the two of those, 61 percent or so said kind of a mixture of fees and And then the priority of the community center compared to other issues, between medium, 32 percent, high priority, and very high priority, you see there's a very strong response that thinks that it is a, at least a medium to high to very high priority. We've had two public meetings so far, this is the third this evening, and the first meeting was held in early December, and had a second in early January, so had very good response and turnout for both of those meetings. We've also visited high, both high schools, and the students actually prepared surveys for the students, and had a presentation at the first public meeting by the high school students of their surveys, which was very great, to have their input. And we've also met with the theater group. At each of our public meetings, we had comment cards that were passed out and received comments, and we've been, we've been referring to those as we've gone through our process as well. At the, also at the first workshop, or the first public meeting, we did a dot polling exercise where we got the citizens up and, and actually voting on their top priorities with dots, and so these really kind of fell in line with the survey results as well, and it was just a good way to get active participation from the public in these meetings. And these were the top 10 spaces that we're programming in the current design. Number one, fitness and cardiovascular area. Number two, indoor walking and running track. Three was the aquatics. Four, group exercise. Five, multipurpose basketball volleyball courts, indoor playground. Racquetball is not currently part of our, our design, but we've hit all these other We, we had an exercise with our, with our citizens group where we use a card game exercise, and each of these cards has a, a space listed on it, and it has statistics about the space, the size of the space, the cost of that particular space. And so it was a really good way of going through and working with the groups to kind of prepare a deck of the spaces that they really preferred, and be able to know what the costs of those spaces were. And you also notice that there's a space where we can talk about the revenue generation and what the cost is to run each of those spaces. So that helped in making those decisions, it was a good way to also look at the programming of the spaces. So looking at those spaces, we, a big part of the process was determining how much the costs were, and how much it would cost to run those spaces as well. So at this point, we've ended up with a very detailed program, Space Needs Program, that details every space in the building, the number of, the area of each space, and the cost of each space. And with that, I'd like to turn it over to Terry to talk more about the site selection process.
Good evening. My name's Terry Burke Bigler. I'm with Confluence. We're landscape architects and provide master planning services as well. So our role on this project has really been to help, help the team with site evaluation and selection process, and then begin to look conceptually at how the program for the community center could fit on the preferred site. So as Kerry mentioned earlier, we started out looking at the service area, and we were, we were directed to evaluate two separate sites. One site located down at 40 Highway and Highway 7, and another site located out at Adams Dairy Parkway on the Missouri Innovation Park site. Both of those sites relative to the service area are centrally located, which is, which is a bonus. It's not like we've got one that's out on the periphery. So I just want to walk you through our process in evaluating those sites and let you know where we stand today. This is, as you're all probably familiar, is the White Oaks Mall site at Highway 7 and Highway 40, just on the southwest corner of that intersection. So within that site, the focus was really on the amount of area that we would need for a facility of this size, based on the program and information that had been developed from the, from the community's input in the surveying and the meetings. Identified that we would need about a 12-acre piece of property to build a facility like this, to accommodate the building, the parking, circulation, and some amount of green space, both for use and for storm drainage. So then we begin to look at things like access, whether it's got good access, moderate access, things like that. So obviously, being at 40 Highway and 7, it's got pretty good access. You can see existing access points on both sides, north and east. Bike route that's along Highway 7, that provides, you know, that's a benefit to a community center site as well, because you have families and, you know, children going to and from facilities. We want to understand what kind of utilities are going to be available. Is it something where we may have to, have to run utility extensions, main extensions to a site, things like that, that would be an extraordinary cost impact? And really, for this site, obviously, we've got those utilities close at hand. One thing that's unique about this site to others, if we're not developing in a greenfield, we've got existing buildings that we have to deal with, so we want to understand what the magnitude and impact of that might be, because those things ultimately then have cost ramifications. Vegetation, if we were looking at a different site, we'd want to understand, are we going to be taking out a lot of quality vegetation, not just from a cost standpoint, but from an aesthetic and a use standpoint? Obviously, on this site, with mostly being parking and buildings, it's not a major issue. We do have a little bit of existing buffer on the south and west sides that we wanted to at least make note of. And then understanding how it fits within the surrounding area. The land use around this, obviously, is immediately primarily commercial with the residential district to the west, and then off to the south and southeast. So that gives us a sense of how this would fit, if it's a good fit or not, and we'll go into that in a little bit more detail. When we have that information, then we start to rank that, and that gives us a sense of, it gives us a way to compare multiple sites. So we looked at a ranking scale of one being positive, zero being neutral, and minus one being a negative factor, just to give us some sense of, of qualitation. So as you look at the site characteristics, the physical characteristic size, shape of this site, because it's square, and we can somewhat manipulate that size, it's, it's a benefit, it's positive on both of those accounts. The topography, it's basically a parking lot, flat, so from an aesthetic standpoint, there's really nothing attractive to the topography, so that would be in the minus category. Expansion capability, so understanding that this might not be the ultimate facility that you build phase one, you may want to expand if it's successful, when it's successful. So we want to understand that. On this site, as we compare it to other sites that, that would be typical, a lot of this is comparing it to a typical community center site, not necessarily directly to the MIP site right now. It really just kind of falls in that neutral category. We can expand if we need to. Some of that's going to be somewhat limited on the ultimate takedown if it's a 12-acre site that's purchased initially or larger. So it's really not a negative or a positive at this time. Image visibility to the public, it's, it's pretty visible, but at the same time, if we, if we want to be smart about this, and the city would look at purchasing we, if we want to be smart about this and the city would look at purchasing maybe the back corner to leave the most attractive front, furniture of the property available for development, then we begin to kind of take away a little bit of that visibility. So we pulled it back from being a positive and just kept it in a neutral category. Neighborhood compatibility, we think it fits pretty well in the neighborhood because it is very near to the residential neighborhood. So it does have, and it's got good access. I mentioned some of those things. Support, economic development and new job growth. These next two categories are a little bit unique to these two sites we looked at. If you think about this site, the category that says redevelopment revitalization potential supports that. This site, because it is a redevelopment site, is a positive in that respect. If we look at the category above that and we think about new job growth, this site may not necessarily be as strong because there's already a certain amount of job activity in that area. There may be a little bit of an uptick because of some residual redevelopment that might occur, but probably not going to be a significant change in job growth. And then I'll talk about how we see that in comparison to the MIP site. Those are a couple of unique things we thought were important to think about with regard to these two sites. The location, centrally located in service area, I mentioned that. Traffic access is strong. Safe and secure surroundings. It's not great, it's not bad. Again, thinking about a typical site, we think it's pretty average. Existing adjacent compatible uses, again, they're okay. Do we want to be immediately surrounded by as much commercial as this? Maybe not, but it also is in a place that's close to some residential. So it kind of balances that out. Adaptability and reuse potential. Again, it's, it's got good potential, but it also has some issues associated with that as we, and we'll talk about those in just a second as we begin to look at, is this really the best reuse? If we think about this being in a commercial area, is a community center the best potential reuse for that from a long-term standpoint for the city, from tax revenue and things like that? So without getting into detail on that, we felt like maybe there are potentially some better uses for this site than a, than a community center long-term. While it could catalyze some things, it may not long-term be the best. Existing site amenities really, you know, there's not much to build off of right now. It's, it's a underperforming retail site. And then if you look at those, they give you a subtotal of a four, and we'll compare that to the MIP site in a minute. But then we started looking at cost impact. And because that is so important for, for investing any public dollars, we felt like it was important to really give that a weighting factor. We multiply those items by three because they are that much more important, in our opinion. So if we look at infrastructure, again, the infrastructure is available. For a site like this, we've seen on these two sites and this site in particular, what we would typically see. We don't have to do any main utility extensions or things like that. It's neutral. Site prep and earthwork, because we do, when we think site prep, we're thinking about demolition. We've got to demolish parking lots, things like that. We've got to get some existing utility lines out of there. So it gets knocked for that and falls into the negative category. Site acquisition, again, it's not owned, but that's not uncommon. If the city's looking to invest in a facility like this, you might quite often have to purchase that property. So we don't give it a negative just because you don't own it, but it's also obviously not a positive. And then demolition and abatement of the existing buildings, I mentioned this, you know, unlike some other sites, you've got those things that you have to deal with and that drops it into a negative category. So all that kicks out a final score of a minus two. I'll walk through the MIP site and then we'll come back to this and just kind of compare the two. So then we look at the MIP site, Adams Dairy Parkway and Napoleon. So just south of the Adams Dairy Landing retail site. And that's, the area that's outlined there is the property approximately twenty-three acres that the city currently owns. While that was the area we were initially directed, well, let's look at that because we own it. We also understand that there's plan for the MIP, the Mizzou Center out there. So we need to understand how it would fit with that. And based on the goal to develop the Mizzou Center on that property, we felt like the best place for a community center and finding twelve acres would be on the southern portion of the MIP property. So that's where we're looking right now, or evaluating the site, is the southern, approximately southern half of that site. Again, we begin to look at access and things like that. Good access off of Adams Dairy Parkway. We've got that immediate entrance off of Napoleon, although there is restricted limit or restricted access off of Napoleon. So primary access for this site would be off of Napoleon, not on Adams Dairy Parkway. Utilities are available. One thing to keep in mind, even though Napoleon's not currently extended into the property, we understand the city has agreed to extend that road as part of the agreement to purchase that property. So that, as we compare it to typical, we, we put it in the category of those services will be provided to the site. Look at the, the topography of the site. Unlike the White Oaks Shopping Center, this one actually has some attractive rolling terrain, which we think is, is something to take advantage of. The vegetation that currently goes along the streamway and wraps around the, the hill on the northern half of the site. And then there's a little bit down along kind of the edge of the, of the golf course. And we look at the land use. There is obviously the commercial development at Adams Dairy Landing. There's some undeveloped commercial to the west of Adams Dairy Parkway. There's developed residential to the west, the golf course, and then the MU Center, even though it's not currently developed, is planned for the northern half of this site as well as the broader Missouri Innovation Park that would expand on farther to the north and east up to Arty Mize. So then we begin to, to rate this. And size, we feel like similar to, to the other site. We've got the acreage or we could get the acreage that we want. We, we think we can configure it how we would need to for expandability. But whenever we look at the shape, because it's not just a rectangle and because we do have some issues to work with, with that alignment of Napoleon to really serve MIP, it comes back a little bit out of the positive category. Attractive topography, the rolling terrain, you're all familiar with that, that landscape out there around the golf course. Image, visibility to the, the visibility to the public, we think is really strong because of the traffic up and down Adams Dairy Parkway and how that can really be a strong visual element as part of the MIP. Neighborhood compatibility, we think is strong. In our opinion, stronger to be associated with a business park or research park like this than maybe surrounded by highway commercial, as well as the multifamily, not just single family, but the multifamily residential across Adams Dairy Parkway, as well as the single family residential. I mentioned the economic development, new job growth. Because of the, the planned MIP and Missouri Innovation Park around this, it's our opinion that this, this really could be a catalyst. This has that opportunity to be, to, to help catalyze some, some development out there and then by virtue of that begin to catalyze some new job growth. And we think that's an important factor to take into account. And then I mentioned, you know, this really is a redevelopment revitalization site. So that's just a neutral. Service area centrality, we've talked about that. Access is strong. Safe and secure surroundings. We leave that as a neutral because even though it's, it's Adams Dairy Parkway, it's still some undeveloped property. So we want to be cautious and not, not be overly generous with that at this point. Existing compatible uses, adjacent compatible uses, similar to the land use, we think that's strong. We think this would fit really well. Reuse potential really is, is not applicable here because it's a new site. Existing site amenities, the site as well as surrounding amenities, obviously with the golf course, there's a good partnership there. The, the opportunity for trails that can be developed within this site through the wooded areas along with MIP or just without, you know, before MIP would happen, we think is really helpful, as well as the trail and bike way along Adams Dairy Parkway. And then you start getting into the cost. And infrastructure here, neutral. It's going to be there or it is there. Site prep and earthwork, it's, it's a neutral item. It's what would be expected of a site like this. The site acquisition is a big kicker here, obviously because it's already owned. So that's one item that really pushes this site, in our opinion, above the, the commercial site. And then demolition and abatement is a non-issue because it really is not a factor on this site. So when you compare the two sites, it, in our mind, becomes pretty clear that the MIP site, based on a number of factors, is really the, the best site. It's our opinion that that would be the preferred site that we would develop this center on. Be happy to answer additional questions about that. We can keep moving on as well. I want to get through that pretty quickly because I don't want to lose everybody's attention. So thinking, thinking ahead, with that, with that site being determined, and we shared that with the steering committee and, and they agreed with that assessment as well. So from there then, we begin to look at, okay, how does this really fit? How does this program really fit on that, on that piece of property on the south end of the MIP? So this is a conceptual site plan. It incorporates a shape of a building that fits the program that Kerry talked about. And I know they're going to talk more in detail about that building in a second. Is there a laser? Is that red dot a laser?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. So if you look at this site, you can see northeast Napoleon extension. I would call it the new Napoleon on the, on the top of the, of the site plan there on the north side, Adams Dairy Parkway on the west, and then the future MIP up at the north of that. So you would enter the site in a location that would share access to the MU Center. Come into the site and have a visual of the main lobby entrance of the community center. You would have a drop-off. So if you want to come in, drop the kids off, you've got easy access to that and then back out. Or you can come in and go to parking, convenience parking in, in locations right around the building as well as, you know, some peak parking farther to the east. We have another access that would come in this location up here. And then if you're familiar at all with the MIP site, the master plan, it shows a future, future connection that might actually connect down to Forty Highway through that general location. And that would be in alignment with that. So we're really trying to make sure that moves made with this are going to be complementary to future moves with MIP. Just moving around the site, proposed service access on this end. So just a real quick overview, you've got a building that has an aquatics facility here on the south side. You've got your recreation facilities, so your fitness gymnasium and things like this on the, on the west end of the building. And then community spaces, so your meeting rooms, classroom, child watch area, things like that, as well as caterer's kitchen. So that, hopefully that little orientation will help you understand then. As we circulate around here, you've got a, a location for a caterer's drop-off. So they can get easy access in and out, as well as if you have a community event, someone has a wedding or something like that, they've got easy access from parking into this location and don't have to go all the way to the front or deal with the control area for the member services. Then we've got, on the backside, we've got some opportunities to do some neat things with patio space off of a central lobby that would be between those two building uses, the community and the fitness. And a patio space then that could open up onto what we think could really be a, a nice little outdoor amphitheater space for just small intimate things to happen, maybe outdoor classrooms through day camps and things like that, as well as maybe some smaller concert events. And we've talked about the opportunity to even do some, some, project some movies on the back wall of that facility. And then off of those meeting rooms, in this location, an outdoor community terrace or patio off of those rooms. So if you've been to Legacy Park and the Community Center and Lee Summit, you can kind of spill out of the meeting rooms onto a patio. Might have fire pits, chairs, tables, seating, things like that. And all of those amenities, what we think is really, really cool about this location and this orientation is you've got this wonderful view of the golf course. So it's a really good fit, we think, from a number of perspectives. But we think that's something to really take advantage of. This being the aquatics, indoor aquatics, there's an opportunity here for a sun deck that would be just outside. So you've got that connection visually into the indoor aquatics. And then I mentioned service drive, but then also providing fire loop access around the site. Hopefully be able to do that in a softer, more of a grass paved way than, than concrete or asphalt. One of the other things I want to touch on is, we mentioned visibility. So when you see some images on the building here in a little bit, I think it'll make a lot of sense. But if you picture yourself driving north on Adams Dairy Parkway and you look at the volume of space of this aquatics facility, if you've seen any of these indoor aquatics facilities, you know, you've got a tall structure there that's going to be glass illuminated at night. I mean, what a, what a real opportunity to create this attractive iconic piece that really speaks to not just Blue Springs, but you know, that's, that's one of those things we think can really be a good indicator of the, of the quality of development that MIP can be, as well as just your, your Adams Dairy Parkway, as you've, as you've built it up and developed it over time to be. So I, unless there's anything else that you guys think I've overlooked, I would turn it back over to you.
Thanks, Terry. My name's Brian Garvey. I'm with SFS Architecture, working with Kerry and with our aquatic consultant, Matt Freebie, with Water Technology, as well as our, our other firm out in Colorado, BRS Architecture. So as Terry mentioned, we're going to look at some of the preliminary floor plans tonight as well as preliminary massing studies on the building that we've done. So to orient yourself again to that site plan, north is up Adams Dairy Parkway on the left side of the screen and the main parking area on the right side of the screen and the golf course to the south. So when we're talking about a community center and we're starting to lay these out, we have our drop-off up here, our main entry. And we really want to orient the lobby so that when you come in, you have a lot of activities immediately visible. It starts to create that excitement and generate that excitement level for the kids, for the visitors and everyone. So we have an existing ridge line here on the site that Terry I think mentioned a little bit earlier. But this is kind of the high point. And then it slopes off to the east and it slopes off to the west. So we're going to try to take advantage of that topography a little bit. And I'll describe that a little bit more as we go ahead. But generally, the way the building is laid out, again, is the community wing off to the east side of the lobby. And then from this point, at this line here, everything to the west of that is your paid memberships. So we'll have a control desk that's located adjacent to the Parks and Recreation staff and the building management and facility management. You'll come into the lobby, there's lounge space with this great view immediately out to the, to the golf course and the amphitheater to the south, a view into the naddatorium, which we're actually depressing everything that's a member service basically. So to the west of that control point, pushing that down into the grade a little bit and following that topography down. So we have a little bit less excavation and we also create a more dynamic experience when you come in. So you're actually kind of an elevated view over the naddatorium. You'll hit your control point from paid members, go down into this corridor where locker rooms, family changing rooms and the wet party rooms or the wet classrooms are located. So this might be where birthday parties occur. So that'll have access to the naddatorium pool deck as well, as well as good visibility. And we'll see that a little bit more later. Down the corridor all the way is the aerobics and dance studio, which is for thirty-six to forty-something folks, and a spinning studio, which will have a shared storage space with aerobics. So you can take, if you don't know what a spinning studio is, it's basically a stationary bike class that's set to music and perhaps has large projector or something like that. So it really creates an exciting atmosphere for people working out. But you can also store those bikes and use that room for something else, a yoga class, a taekwondo class, something along those lines. And then our main gymnasium space here, which has two middle school courts crossing over a full-size high school feature court with volleyball overlaid on those two middle school courts. Building services, as Terry mentioned, located on this far west side, off the service drive and fire loop, which are actually lower elevation than Adams Dairy Parkway. So when you're driving by, you look kind of over that at this large building and these larger spaces above it. On the community wing side, we have our indoor play, which will have great visibility when you come in. So kids will get excited and jazzed up about that. A teen room or a game room space, our three community events halls, which are really one large space that can be subdivided into three twelve-hundred square foot rooms. So all in, it's seating for two-hundred-and-forty people, table style. Child watch right across the hall adjacent to indoor play, and that'll have an outdoor space available for outdoor play. And then public restrooms, our catering or our prep kitchen that'll serve the events halls or anything occurring over in this community room. And then on the far east side here is an elevated stage and classroom. And this responds to some of the needs in the community for the theater space. And we'll see that a little bit more as we go ahead. That's basically a, a classroom for arts and crafts that can also double and open up into that events hall as a stage space. So going to the second floor, coming from the control area, you'd come up. This is where all of our weights and fitness and our running track are going to be located. And we've tried really hard to make this running track experience something a lot more exciting and dynamic than just running fifteen laps around a gym. So you can see here that this running track, track is actually touching several spaces and has great exterior views. So you come in the lobby and this could actually be open to the lobby and you can see people running by. Run along the north elevation. So we have an opportunity to put windows into that track so you can see out to the north on so you can see out to the north on Adams Dairy Parkway and people can see in. You're circling the gymnasium here on the north and east, or north and west side, and then coming around and really looking down over the naddatorium and even out over the naddatorium to the golf park, or golf course to the south. So, from the preliminary floor plans where we're at is, we're doing a, or we've just concluded kind of a massing study. So, we're looking at the general size of the building, the heights, and then taking a very diagrammatic approach to where we want views in and out of this facility. So, you can see the start of that. It's devoid of any real architectural characteristics at this point because, as Kerry mentioned, we just went through our, kind of our visual preferences or architectural character exercise. So, that's going to inform the next stage of the study and the development of this architectural model. But I'll kind of go through these as quickly as I guess I can, but you can see here, you'll get a good glimpse of really the size and shape of the building and how some of these spaces function adjacent to each other. So, again, in our lobby, you can start to see the control desk here, how those views out to the south can really be developed, the view into the naddatorium, a view into and through the party rooms perhaps that, that really accentuates that view or that experience, and then that view into the indoor play. A critical thing is locating this control desk so that we have good visibility down all the corridors to the entry, to the aquatics, and really trying to oversee that whole, the whole facility as best we can. Another view looking from the north to the southwest. So, here you can see that tot lot, that outdoor play space that can be tied to the child watch or the indoor play, held back from the entry drive a bit to create a secure space, but really has a six-foot high or so fence around that so that it's a secure place, but it can be fun for the kids to play in. View, bird's eye again from Adams Dairy Parkway looking south towards the golf course. And here's kind of a close-up of how that elevated stage and classroom really can work. And we've went out and, as Kerry mentioned, we've met with the city theater group. We've heard some of their concerns about the facility and how we can best address that and create a, you know, either a better facility for them to use than what they currently have, or at least meet that and put them in a position that they can grow into it and better it in the future. So, what we're showing here is all three community rooms opened up with this elevated stage and maybe a temporary platform here. Now, this actually would create a stage comparable in size to what they have at the high school right now. And then, the space behind the stage is actually, I think, a little bit larger than what they have at the high school. So, other features that would have to come in are maybe getting it set up for lighting or at least having the infrastructure and the power there that lighting can be added in the future. But this is, is really comparable to the situation they have with the obvious lacking of stadium seating or sloped seating arrangement for viewing the shows. And of course, you can see the patio space that ties into all three of these rooms, so events can spill out onto the patio, as Terry mentioned, with fire pits or seating or any arrangements like that. Another view of the gymnasium a little closer where you can see the fitness arrangement on the side, locating cardiovascular equipment, treadmills, ellipticals, so that you're elevated a little bit, seeing over the running track into the naddatorium and out again into the, into the golf course to the south. And then, just the last view where you can see the stage again. Matt from Water Technology is going to go into the aquatics next here. This is a view from Napoleon Drive, from the entry drive. So, here you can see in the massing, we have a large, or an opportunity for a two-story lobby space with a pretty dramatic entry. This is actually a covered space that the track running overhead creates. So, the purple box beyond is where Parks and Rec exists in that plan, and this can actually be covered. So, you can be waiting for a ride undercover and not have to worry about get wet if you're waiting for mom and dad to come pick you up. And back to that image, that idea of creating identity for the building. As Terry mentioned, this is a view from Adams Dairy Parkway headed northbound, looking down that south property line. So, the golf course would be over here to the right. This would actually be down in a swale where you see this darker area, and that could be that storm detention area and the service drive. But the building is still up on that ridge that's about at the same level as Adams Dairy Parkway. So, it'll really rise up and have some prominence on this, on this western edge. And then, of course, with the, you know, illuminated interior and the curtain wall is most naddatoriums are, are usually having. I'm going to turn it over to Matt from Water Technology.
Okay. Which way? That way?
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Let's see what we get. Okay. Based on the input from the steering committee, programming input from the surveys and the community meetings, the facility is designed primarily based on a family-oriented recreation, fitness, and then lesson program. Some of the major components, funny cold, excuse me. Some of the major components that I'll go over briefly, in the interest of time, is a 200-foot lazy river with an action channel. Action channel is a separate area where you can choose to go around and get wet or choose to go another way and stay dry. Zero-depth entry and a separate, or not really separate, but a alcove with a water play area. So, again, it's families with toddlers can stay in a, in a less aggressive environment. Kids that want to be more active, there's a play area off to one side. A lap area with wave action, a rock climbing wall. I mentioned wave action and deep water. A 200-foot slide, a whirlpool, and then an adult fitness pool. The adult fitness therapy pool would have the ability to take equipment both in and out of it, so you could change the equipment with the needs of the community and with the trends based on the time as you're working forward. To concentrate for just a moment on the, the programming aspects of these pools, shallow water up at one end, and you'll notice that that is located directly off of the family lockers. So, when, again, when families come out with kids, the first thing they will see and be drawn to is the shallow water. And programming areas for shallow water activities, including water aerobics, resistance walking in the lazy river. I mentioned water aerobics. You could do wave rescue practice in here. So, that's shallow water activities. You also have, for, again, fitness areas and water aerobics, you have the adult wellness pool over here, which would again be basically shallow water that's chest-deep or about chest-deep, 3, 3/6 water. Again, in that, I'm going to jump back for just a second. In that adult therapy pool, we would be using in-pool equipment. So, different equipment that you can put in and take out. There is resistance weights that use the water to lift weights. There's treadmills that can be put in, taken out, stationary bikes and things like that. There is all sorts of equipment has been developed for these types of pools. That would be something we'd want to work with your staff to develop the proper programming for what your needs are. And then, of course, deep water. For the rock climbing, you could hang a rope from the top and have climbing onto a rope. That rock wall is located and supported by the slide tower. You could also, or we'd be envisioning having activities on that slide tower. For instance, the river mentioned goes under the slide towers. You could have water cannons that you could spray kids going, your friends that are going under them, or a bucket that you could dump on them, and also have water spraying off of that rock wall. Did I hit the right button? So, basically, out of this facility, I would say that at least 85 to 90% of this is program type activities. In other words, it's useful for deliberate programming. Just a couple of quick images. I'm trying to go very quickly to sort of keep up with time here. This happens to be a current channel with, you can see some of the resistance walking that's taking place and exercise. We did a quick sketch of the, just to help you understand what that rock wall would be. Basically, your water level is indicated here, so it doesn't affect someone who's coming in. It extends from the water surface up. It does not extend down into the, into the water. So, people can try climbing up and out of it. Water depth is 10 to 12 feet at that point. You can also have then, we were referring to it earlier today as the cliff diving opportunity here, about six feet at that point. Not real cliff diving. Okay? Any questions? I went through that really quickly to...
Okay. That's Matt.
So, this is the visual preference exercise that we went through with the steering committee today, where we gave them the opportunities to look at different forms of buildings, different materials, different entry types, and vote with dots and put green dots on the things they liked and red dots on things they didn't like. So, so this is a quick example of, we looked at the architectural forms. There were some very modern forms. There were some more traditional forms and lots of, lots of in-between. You'll see that the very modern things got red dots and things that maybe looked more like city halls rather than community centers got red dots. So, I think we, we've got a really good direction on the type of form that the steering committee would like us to pursue. Entry types, again, we have a big grouping on certain, certain entries that I think people preferred, entries that have landscape elements as you enter into those entry points, you know, entries with overhangs and, and good visibility into those entries and visibility And then, finally, exterior materials. It looks like we had a wide range of materials that we were showing here, everything from wood to precast to brick to metal panels. And so, I think there was a real preference for the more natural materials, wood, wood materials, stone. And so, we, I think we felt like we really got good input from the committee on the, on the direction that they'd like us to take. And so, I wanted to emphasize that the concepts that we showed tonight with the aquatics and the floor plans are all very conceptual at this point. There would be a lot of development that would need to be taken with those. But the next steps would be to really define and start developing the overall form of the building and really start getting a feel for what that building would look like, based on the feedback that we received today. So, I'd like to open it up for questions and discussion.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from the council? Questions or comments from the council? Councilman Edmondson.
Was there any talk about sustainability in, in the facility? For example, solar panels, exterior water heating, that type of thing?
Absolutely. And we've included in our budget so far, a lot of those sustainability elements for solar, water, heating, you know, the sustainable mechanical systems, very good envelope, high-performance glass. That's something that's going to be very important to really help your bottom line and save energy. So, that is a very, that's a good point, and that's something that's going to be a key issue with developing this community center.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments from council? Okay. And certainly, your input later on is, is welcome. So, I mean, you had to consume a lot tonight, and so, to give you a chance to digest a little bit, if you have anything, be sure and get that to Dennis and...
May I say something?
Sure.
I serve on the steering committee, so I've been through all these meetings. So, I'm more interested in hearing the public input as we move forward on this. We've already had a couple of public meetings, and one of those was rather spirited. So, if there are folks in the audience tonight, you probably have speaker...
We're going to do that during the visit session.
Forms. Would love to hear.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we move on to the next item on the agenda, which is the merril announcements and thoughts to ponder, are there steering committee members present tonight? Why don't you stand? Any steering committee members, please stand. And we want to thank you for your service and, and working with architects and everybody that's on the feasibility consultants and with Dennis and his staff. So, thank you so much for your participation. Now, some of you are going to stand more than one time because of the nine parks commissioners. I think we have at least five of you present. So, would you stand? Park commissioners. Okay. We want to thank you for your service as well as we sort through this. And certainly, we want to be able to make a statement, when Blue Springs does something, it does it right. And so far, I've been very impressed with my participation in this and what I've seen. This is a long time coming, but I, but I think we're on the road because we are a city on the move. You know I was going to put that in there. And, and again, if you have comments you want to make, staff will get you those visitors' appearance forms, and we will recognize you. But we're going to move on to merril announcements and thoughts to ponder, and then we'll come down back to the visitors. My State of the City address is scheduled for this Thursday, but they're talking about inclement weather conditions. I know the legislature is not going to work Thursday because of that, and there are a number of events that have been canceled. So, ours is still up in the air until Thursday morning. Is that right? As it stands right now, we'll make that decision. I'm looking to you, Todd, for some guidance.
It's correct.
Okay. Certainly, we would invite as many people to come and participate as possible because otherwise, you're going to have to have me if you don't show up. I'm going to tell you, I had a great State of the City address. But certainly, we enjoy doing it. And before you get out of here, I want to recognize our former parks director, Roscoe. Thank you. Thank you for coming as well. Thoughts to ponder. You know, I mentioned at the first meeting, this is Black History Month, and I, I always make an effort to recognize some of the comments that, some notable, famous, inspirational comments that were made by people. Some of them, I think most of these are no longer, well, yeah, no, no longer alive. This one comes from Coretta Scott King, Dr. King's wife. It says, quote, "Hate is too great a burden to bear. It injures the hater more than it injures the hated." End quote. The next one comes from Booker T. Washington. And I quote, "Success is to be measured not so much by the position that one has reached in life as by the obstacles which he has overcome while trying to succeed." End quote. And the last one is an African proverb. It says, I quote, "God gives nothing to those who keep their arms crossed." End quote. Very profound. That brings us to visitor section, and I have some, and I'm going to call your name, and I'm going to have you come up. Oh, okay. I'm going to call your name and have you come up and speak to us. We have Brian Mullis. Thank you for coming, Brian. You're here to speak about the community center in support of?
Yes, I am, city council. Thank you. When, last, the last time the, the feasibility study met, I felt like a kid at Christmas. I was getting everything I thought this center was needing when they, they had a separate lap pool, they had a therapeutic pool, and then the, I call it kind of the play pool area. I, I missed the part about the lazy river. I don't know where that came from, and I, I didn't see any lap pool there. I'd like to know where the lap pool went. So, okay. And again, it's a beautiful site, a beautiful plan. I'm thrilled. I'll use it. I, I've swam at 36 different pools from Indianapolis to Manhattan, from Omaha to Springfield, Missouri, and I've never seen any lazy rivers in those public pools. I think it's going to eat cash, and it's going to be a novelty that's going to wear off. But it looks like a great, great building, and I want to thank the steering committee for, for doing all their work. And all you consultants, you guys are number one, I tell you. But I'm disappointed that the lap pool, that the lap pool disappeared, but swimming has never been a priority in Blue Springs anyway. So, what can I say? But thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming. Yeah. Dennis, you want to address this question?
Sure. And I'd like to go back here a couple to, to that screen and kind of show you how we've kind of incorporated the lap swimming, kind of take... If you notice in, in this area right here, you'll see some lanes that are here. What we can do is, is this is also used for lap swimming as well, but it gives it multipurposes so that it also can be used for that deep water. But what we do is we use that as a program time. So, you know, from a certain time, this would only be allowed for lap swimming, and then other times it would be... would only be allowed for lap swimming, and then other times it would be opened up more for the play feature. So that's kind of how we're addressing the lap swimming in this design.
So in essence, it does address, it's just part of the programming part of it. Thank you.
Your Honor, may I just add, reminding everybody here, it's still conceptual, and there's still a lot of work that needs to be done. There was a tremendous amount of discussion today about this very issue with the steering committee, and recognizing that you can't deliver everything to everybody. And so when you begin focusing on perhaps families and recreation, are some of those interests or desires perhaps in conflict with some of the other special interest groups? Nevertheless, the steering committee is trying to find a package and a formula that will try to do the very best job they can to meet all those needs. So there's still going to be a lot of development that's going to occur on this, and I imagine that our water consultant, he's got his work cut out for him.
Yes, you want to make a comment?
Yeah. Just to address the question about the lazy river, if I can find the correct... I may hit the wrong direction here. Whoops, going the wrong way. In terms of the fitness component for the lazy river, it's used typically by seniors, a lot of water walking and resistance walking, resistance swimming, and competitive swimmers will go in and do resistance swimming and stroke work with their coaches occasionally because it's a stand, it's a stand-in place so the coach can sit there and analyze a stroke in one position as opposed to walking up and down with them. That's, it's much more common in the recreation facilities today that we're seeing. Just to help address your question.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Michelle Brown. You might want to pull, yeah. Go ahead, pull it. You don't have to sit up, so just pull it down.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Michelle Brown. I'm the president of the Blue Springs City Theater Board, and I appreciate the chance to address the mayor and the city council. Blue Springs City Theater has been a presence here in Blue Springs for 26 years. During that time, we've done over 100 shows. We've had thousands of people come through our doors as cast, crew, and audience members. We are proud to say that we've sent kids from our stage to not only both of the high schools, but to Starlight, UMKC, Juilliard, Broadway, and right now, we have one of our kids is on the Disney Channel. So we're pretty excited about our accomplishments. We're also proud of some of the programs that we've been able to do, working with scouts and other youth groups, where we've brought them in, taught them classes, let them see our shows for free, and they volunteered as ushers for us. We are always amazed at every single show that we do that program, that we have at least one child who has never seen live theater before. That's an amazing thing for our cast, to be the first bunch of actors those kids see. I really believe in it strongly. We are proud of the plan that the Parks and Rec has developed that includes Blue Springs City Theater and will allow us to grow in the future and continue to serve the citizens of Blue Springs. I think that by doing that, the Parks and Rec Department has ensured that we'll have a well-rounded citizenry, and I thank them for their support of our program, and we're glad to support their programs. Thank you.
Thank you, Michelle. I have a question for you. When I first became mayor, somebody started talking to me about city theater. Was it you?
Probably.
Okay. Figured as much.
Yeah. I've got my whole family invested in this, so you've probably heard from one of them.
Okay.
So, thank you.
Thank you so much for commenting and sharing your thoughts with us. The last one I have is Darren Tubal.
Councilmembers, mayor. My name is Darren Tubal with World Series of America, and this summer, July the 10th through the 14th, I am holding a World Series event, youth baseball event, in Lee Summit, Missouri, at Legacy Park. And I'm coming to Blue Springs to ask for some assistance. The event is growing large, and I am looking for baseball fields and hotels, and I thought this would be the first stop. If you could help me in getting, well, by the way, I'll show you... I promote outside teams coming in from outside the state. We're representing Lee's speech right now. I have approximately 30 ball teams coming in from out of town, and that's why I'm needing hotels. I am doing some business with Lee Summit. They're limited on hotels, and they're smaller. I'm doing most of my business with independents. They have come up with, the revenue for the city is touching $1 million for what this event will do. Well, I'd like to come a little bit further east and share that revenue with Blue Springs, get your hotels on my website, get some heads in beds, as they say, get people eating in your restaurants, and share that. And Hidden Valley, I've looked at the ballpark, and I, we would really like to get maybe three to five fields with Hidden Valley.
Have you had any conversation with our Chamber of Commerce?
No.
Okay. Certainly, and then you're going to ask him about Dennis.
Sure. My question was, have you reached out to our Parks and Rec director?
No, I have not.
Okay, so Mr. Dovell's here, and we'd be happy to sit down with you and discuss your needs and see how we might be able to, certainly, love baseball here, and it sounds like an exciting program that you're bringing.
Right. I actually have three or, two or three teams from the Blue Springs area with other ones interested in coming over, so...
So I would encourage you to hang around here and meet Mr. Dovell, and then we'll sit down with you and see how we can explore this.
Okay. I appreciate it.
And then, when you're meeting with them, let's put them in touch with the Blue Springs Chamber as well.
Okay.
I appreciate you coming out here. Anytime that you want to bring us some money, I welcome you to come.
That's what I'm saying. You're talking about bringing new money and not your money.
That's right. Can we keep this, do you need this back? Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you for coming. I don't have any others. Anybody else? Well, if not, we have an executive session we have to go into, so we're going to accept a motion to go into executive session to discuss real estate issues. There is a motion...
I will second that motion.
Yeah, we've got a motion, we've got a second. I think we need to roll call the, going into executive session, and then we're going to recess for about two or three minutes to allow our visitors to be excused. Okay, roll call?
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Bowerman.
Aye.
Councilman Blavell.
Aye.
Councilman Levis.
Aye.
Carrie Yanis.
We're going to stand and recess for about two or three minutes to allow our visitors to be excused.[1725.83]